Right on time.
Well, it leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
Beautiful day.
Beautiful day. All right.
Yeah, September something.
Something. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. Anybody have any conflicts of interest or anything? All right, so we'll call the agenda approved. Madam Auditor, will you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
August 6, 2024, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 a.m. with Gene Hyden, Chair Presiding, members present were Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, Rosberg. Member absent was Mole Power. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved the change of status for Jennifer Mock, Mike on-call PRN Dental Hygienist Public Health. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg to approve the notice of public hearing and publication thereof related to a proposed property exchange between Crawford County and the city of Manila here in date August 20th, excuse me, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to approve the bid of $56,327.86 from JP Electric Limited for a new 660 KW generator at the community health building. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to reappoint Sherry Vaughn to the Region 12 Regional Housing Authority Board of Directors for a term of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due 2nd of the board adjournment at 10:30 a.m. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, 4/5 p.m. preceding the next meeting.
All right, everybody. Read what that...
See, when I, when she was reading through that, it made me come up, we were gonna maybe make sure we call that the Community Services Building, for the building itself. So that's something that we want to actually make official, or don't matter.
Um, you know, before we start, you know, putting a name on the building, you know, which I think that we should identify it. I know Louise has been really excited about what she's gonna have down below as the veterans part of it. So, you know, I would think maybe on the First Avenue North Side, or that would be Second Avenue North Side, it'd be good to have something because when it used to say City Center, I guess the hospital was still getting a lot of calls, people pulling up and thinking they were at the city center and, you know, where to go and stuff. So, people do look at the building's name. I think it's important that we identify what.
Well, I just think that we have done a little more formal or informative than annex.
I agree. So, I, I think that the way to get it done properly is to have it on the agenda, get the name and put it in the minutes, that that's what we're calling it, and get the letters to put up that this is what it is, and have it identified on our website, that's what's in Community Services Building, things like that. So.
Louise could have the veteran ring of the.
There you go. That's kind of, because it does serve multiple purposes at different times. So I think that I'll task you all to bring back your name for next week. We'll have it on the agenda to get a name, and then we'll actually get some letters ordered and get it up on the building and call it that forever and ever. So.
Sorry, I didn't.
Sounds simple. I'm just going through my head right now how much, how difficult this may be.
Well, and I always give you a line.
Maybe we don't take a lot of questions. We just, between the five of us, we come up with the name and there it is.
I think that giving you all a week.
I was thinking about it, will public health object, say?
What is their name? What is public health?
Community Health.
Community Health.
That's what they're called.
Which I really.
They didn't ask us if we could change it.
No, they did not. This is the building, not their name. I was so against them not having the word hospice in their name anymore because I truly wonder if you're somebody from out of town looking for a place for your relatives in Crawford County, and you put in hospice. I don't know if that still comes up, and I think that we're losing some of our hospice patients because we're not putting hospice in our name. So, just another thought. Anyways, so we'll have, can you make a note to put that on the agenda, that naming of the building gives us a week for me to talk to public health? You think, you know, think about that, the board and, you know, and bring those thoughts back and.
They might.
They might.
Want to have some input because if you have a building named one thing, and then the inside of it, it's kind of confusing.
Absolutely. And that's why it's going to take a week so we can think that all out, with the pros and cons to what we would call it.
Yeah, I, I get that. But, I mean, this is the courthouse. It ain't the auditor's office. It's the auditor's office in the courthouse. It's the treasurer's office in the courthouse. That's.
And I think that that's exactly the point, because if we have it public health, and somebody's looking for the Veterans Administration.
EHS or whatever, maybe over to go.
Oh, and according to my sources, they're gonna start doing that WIC program up there, and so if they say, you know, I just think it's easier to have the buildings, and this is who's inside the building, just like, it's, it's something to think about. I'm giving you a whole week.
And I don't think it's good that you have those, well, what is it in Des Moines where we go to? It's now the Veterans Choice Community Credit.
Oh, yeah, I mean, somebody wanting to sponsor the building, we could probably buy it.
You know, you don't want a paragraph of a name either.
It could be the Mole Power for enough money.
Sponsored by private financial.
Yeah, there we go. Pokemotives.
Hayden Country.
I just got the jigs. I don't get revoked on Hayden Country with the.
You don't leave them out. Ty, Rod.
I'm good. I like the Community Services, because it's about community.
Is it community or county?
County Services.
Good point.
See, there is, that's why you're all getting a good solid seven days to talk to your people to hear the pros and cons on our thought. Anytime we make a decision and we don't have a chance to talk to people, we come back and regret it sometimes. So, let's vet it.
County Services Palace.
Palace, okay. We'll all think, we'll throw some names in a hat and pull one out, but let's start thinking about that so we can get the letters ordered and get the building named and keep moving on. So, alrighty. What else? Anybody want to go first? They have something special they want to talk about? Raise your hand.
I just got quick.
Go ahead.
No, mine's quick.
You go first. You never get to go first.
Mine's quick, because I don't, I, I, I could give you a big report on the fair. It's been going great. Beautiful weather.
Isn't it been great?
Thank you, whoever sends that our way, I'm sure I know. Anyway, Leading Edge is CDC's new leadership program.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this is their first year. It's actually got 10 candidates in it. Really a very well thought, uh, there you go. Well, anyway, they want to stop by on October 1st, and they wanted to know a contact that could actually, you know, give them some information on the building. But I said, what you need is a contact, and then have each department head or official as you, that you want to go to, basically have them speak on what's going on in their department. Because, you know, while some have some cross ideas or worked in multiple departments, most have their specialty. So anyway, their depart, I, the, the contact that I referred them to was Ms. Martin, so.
Martins.
Martins, sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Martins, our auditor. So, anyway, but they want to be able to meet with the supervisors that day just visit and basically network a minute. And so I said, well, 9:15 would probably be the best time to do that. So they had it time stamped down for them, because they actually got a pretty full plate for these people.
So are they leading the departments after that?
Yeah, I, I think that would, well, actually, they got a schedule that starts at like 8:00 or 8:30. So some of them could be before, and then come through here at 9:15, you know?
Is this?
I mean, you don't have to lead them around the building, but you're, you're just their point of contact.
Okay. Is this where they were talking at one time of having like 10 or 12 people in a group setting, and then they give you specialized training to help become leaders in the community?
Community leaders, yep. So develop.
I'm hoping to get that many, but I don't.
They get 10.
Oh, they did get their 10? They did? Because it was a little pricey.
They don't want 15 as the max, but they've got a lot in their schedule. I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, I think it's gonna be very benefit.
Can you tell us, you know, what range of professions these people that signed up, is it like their business?
I didn't see any of the names.
Just curious if it's somebody who's paying for their person to come?
I suspect, because it was, you know, it was a little over 1,000 a person, about 1100.
1150 is what I was thinking.
I think you might be right. But it's, it's, they've got a lot lined out for them to do. I mean, it's, it's multiple months and.
If you really break it down, it's very reasonable, like that initial, you know exactly what you're gonna be able to bring back for your company. But just go both of them.
So anyway, that's kind of helping them to develop in the county as community leaders and stuff like that. So hopefully they're putting, I mean, I, I don't think age is probably a matter, but I mean, a lot of young people, I would like to see a lot of young people get involved.
I wonder if they could just give us an overview of what business they're with and approximately their age, just no names, just kind of who is interested.
They're gonna be coming through here. Oh, you mean other people you're talking about?
Give them the heads up that we'd like to maybe just know if they're, you know, 20-year-olds or 50-year-olds or, you know, kind of.
Well, you'll be able to see them.
Well, they'll be right here. You'll get a good guess.
I just, I know if someone's 20 or 50.
Well, very good. Very good.
I don't want you to tell me what you think.
I will tell you, I went through Iowa Pork's Leadership Academy, and, you know, we obviously traveled around the country. But that, I was one of the, there was a couple my age. There was a lady from up in Lamar's area, then me. And the young kids really liked having us, is what they ended up telling us. They said, God, it was great to have you guys in your experience in life, be able to share things with us as well. So, it was really good. Actually, Brian Lindell from up here just north of Kyra, and he was actually one of those on with me. And it was a, I really enjoyed that, and it looks to me like this is pretty similar.
So it says that they do a day a month for like 12 months. Is this the very first day that they're doing something? So they will have no?
I don't think so.
It's not?
I don't think so.
Okay. And you said October 1st, and it kind of said in there September through, yeah, September through May, through May.
I don't think.
So I didn't know if they were meeting in September or?
I think so. I think there's like an orientation day type setup deal.
Do they want to go office to office, or would they rather have them meet them in the conference room or?
And I think that's something.
Something like that.
Give them more time with them if they did that, because they'll spend a lot of time walking around.
Right.
But they were asking me this morning, and I was talking like Paul's somebody you'd certainly want to talk to. And then obviously each, each elected official, and other, and maybe the other department heads, maybe they have, you know, Kim over from Public Health, just see what, you know, to kind of teach them what's available in the, in the county. And I think they're probably gonna meet with the bigger cities then, and recruit and learn about them too.
I would like to know where they're from, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell that. I love that.
I suspect quite a few will be from here.
And if they're ultimately dentists and, and what business or industry they represent.
We might do them on.
We might, right.
Yeah. It'll probably have a name tag. But anyway, that's, uh, that's what they wanted to be able to do then, is be that, and so I should, 9:15 will probably be the best time where you got an exact time, because they've got them on a pretty, there's, they got a schedule, they're doing stuff. So, anyway, uh, and I've been having, I had also had a meeting this morning about economic development and some of the things that we're working on there, and obviously all that's, you know, not for public consumption of all, in all things. So I just try to be quiet and say, oh, what, anything? So I don't do anything, don't get in trouble. But doing some positive things on, on economic development and, uh, really a step, I will say this, just Stephanie Wees is actually, boy, having her as our president right now is really beneficial. She's doing a great job, and she's got some great contacts out there. We're rocking and rolling. Hopefully, all pays off. That's all I got. Mr. Schultz, thank you for giving me out.
All right. We'll just go around this way. How's that?
Sure. A few things, unless you want to.
No, go ahead.
Few things. I talked to Jake Sigibar last night, which he brought up. Our new assurance, some of our employees can't use him as a chiropractor. It was they're trying to become one of the preferred providers from Blue Cross, but has been denied, been denied last how many years? Something that will come up down the road here when we talk with Holmes Murphy. Just bring that to your attention.
Are they on the agenda today?
Yeah, we're supposed to be, but they.
They weren't available.
Couldn't get anybody on Zoom and couldn't get anybody to come here, even though we have great concerns.
So there, yeah, there's some concerns with that. We'll have to, as we go forward, we'll ask some questions at Holmes Murphy and.
There's gonna be a lot of questions because of the fact that, that copay, you know, they want everybody to pay everything upfront. There's just a whole bunch of things that, and it is concerning that you only have one provider in Crawford County. You know, that's not really the people that are going to.
Well, Jake was telling me, what time does, by per capita, what they allow for your providers? They look at people in your area and say, okay, this is the number of providers you get.
But why did that?
They don't accept any more into the network if they're at that levels, which you're saying.
That's what they, that's what Jake was talking about.
Should the question be, why did it change? Because our employees have been used to, you know, everything, nothing was supposed to change. That was not brought to our attention. And all of a sudden now, you've been going to Jake, and all, all of a sudden you don't get the same deal as if you were going to the one that they.
Did you guys go back, and Terry was nice enough to send out the dates. Did anybody go back and watch those meetings?
Which ones?
Oh, the Holmes Murphy meeting. No, I did not. I did not.
Okay, well, I, I did.
I know you would. You counted on that.
Watched every one of them. And, I mean, I jotted down some notes, because what I had is what they, they actually said to us was, um, yes, on the last, on the 319 meeting was, okay, uh, most blew up. When, when we decided to go, they, they told us that if we stay with the exact same Wellmark plan that we can get from Wellmark, that nothing will change. If you decide to go with the, what, HGHCP? As IGHCP.
IGHCP.
And if, if you go that route, that there will be some changes, because before you were having, there's gonna be some added copays that are, you're not doing now, and there may be a chiropractor that might not be in the network, because that's what they have seen in the past, and people have switched to the IGHCP plan versus the plan that they were on before. So it seems to me like the problems we're having were exactly the problems that they said you were gonna have if you switched to that HGHCP plan, and we decided to do that. So, I mean, they said it in the first meeting in January, that if you would change from the exact same Wellmark plan, because we had that option that we could purchase that exact same plan.
That was gonna be a lot more expensive, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. And, and the IGHCP plan, um, they had less, what do you want to say? It's, the changes, the increase in prices were less and not as volatile as what we were seeing. It was pretty consistent. Like, it was 3.9, 4.1, not a real up and down, up and down, like we were seeing previously. And so I think that was another benefit that we saw over and over again. I remember that. So, I mean.
They also said we were gonna be getting all these reports and all.
They, they did say that many times, that we would be getting monthly reports. They said with every employee, we'd get a full deductible credit from the beginning of the year to whenever we decide to implement the plan, and I understand that's been, I understand that's been a problem.
Yeah.
And they did say, I, I don't remember if we did, but did we sign a 28G with all the counties? We did, okay.
Children did.
And then like, I, I hadn't quoted, that's just said, most issues are with the chiropractor, and $20 difference is no big deal. So, exactly. And we would get those reports on a monthly basis, no matter who we chose, if we chose, choose to stay with Wellmark plan.
Because there's one could be coming from Holmes Murphy themselves, right?
Well, they, you know, when they gave us that report way back in the January meeting, that that report came from Wellmark, but we had never seen it before, and they were actually just deciphering it, and then they, I think they said, well, we'll be able to take that information and put it into Holmes Murphy storm, so to speak, and get it out to you on a monthly basis. You know, I guess what we didn't ask specifically was, does that mean, you know, for the month of July, we get an August, we'll get the report by August?
That's what you said.
What, you know?
Right.
Now we're mid-August, and we haven't seen the July report.
Exactly. And they're gonna be on the agenda next week? Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, it is. Zoom, but I mean, then they can, especially secondary roads is where I've had my most complaints, probably, I guess would be the best way to put it.
I mean, the most frustration. The first day of January and the last day of March 19th, to me, were the two most informative meetings, if you wanted to go back and look at them before they showed up. Um, and they're each probably, they were in our attendance for an hour or just a little longer each time. The meeting on the 23rd, I didn't have much information, anything written down. So, I didn't glean much from that, but I did on the others. The 23rd, the secondary, and I zoomed in, and the 3rd meeting, I'm here. So thank you, Terry, for sending those. That was nice to get the dates, so that.
To your point, Craig, you know, as far as going with the route of being more volatile in our cost and even having a more expensive plan upfront, is it, what's the lesser of two evils? Having the, not being able to go to your chiropractor, or having to pay a little more for that, or having a higher cost for the overall insurance premium?
But our employees could have ended up taking more a bite of those costs too, and you, this board was able to not have that happen.
Because I mean, I'm trying to walk the line without, so, yeah, so, you know.
Cost them too much, but yet. Yeah, the monthly premium is maybe more modest, where, okay, if you're going to a, you know, specifically, it seems to be the chiropractor is the biggest culprit, um, you know? Yeah.
Some surgery stuff has come up that.
Well, because we don't have copays, we have co-insurance. So that's, that's different. It's different.
I think it's just the insurance industry we're gonna be facing with this, as prices continue to just skyrocket. Or, I mean, I'm doing it on, reevaluating all my insurance on the fire, the auto insurance, I'm gonna lose.
Every insurance.
Taking off your deductibles or whatever, trying to keep costs down, and, or just not even insuring some things anymore, you know, just.
She heard of this, buy new if you need it.
I know, exactly.
It's to the point where, that's kind of what I think we, as a board, we're trying to facilitate, you know? Unfortunately, it comes up with some effects. But you try to reduce costs, and on one end, save the taxpayers some money.
Right. But it requires you to rebudget some things so that you can cover those unexpected things that might happen now, because you're not covering everything. So, yeah.
And it just happens at times with hyperinflation and everything, all compounding every day.
Yeah. Well, and part of that for me would be, you pay the higher premium every month, and you're one of those people that don't go to the chiropractor, you don't go to the doctor very often, you're paying a bigger premium, and you're not, it's, you know, but then if you go, I think it almost seems a little fair that you're the one going to the doctor. Why shouldn't everybody pay a higher monthly premium, or in case you go? You know, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
But it's always been where you encompass the whole group of people, you know?
Right, 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 right.
At one time, you know, the younger, and they get to be the older, and it's.
I get it, I get it.
Well, maybe next year, we need to have a plan that has copays.
Correct. That maybe.
Have an additional choice.
That choice for the, the individuals who are right in the middle of, you know?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's more choices to fit your specific need would be ideal.
And I grew IGHCP, you still couldn't do that.
Probably. There has to be a plan that offers a copay. I mean, multiple plans, I imagine.
Do you think there's any avenues through Holmes and Murphy or IGHCP that they could help with providers that are trying to become preferred providers to be?
I think that's a great question to ask them right here.
Hopefully, there is.
That, hey, we have people that are employees want to have on the list. How do we get them on the list?
Right. Because that was one thing I said during the meetings, is it's very important in small-town Iowa that the providers that our employees go to are providers on your plan. I mean, you know, they need to, they need to, yeah.
Well, I just heard this morning that somebody goes to one over in Carroll, had a, you know.
Right, and the chiropractor thing is just so.
Yeah, it's.
I've never been to a chiropractor in my life, but I know people that go, and once they find one person that can fix them, that's the one person they will continue to go to.
Well, you know, it's, it's just like your family, Doctor. You get comfortable with them, you know that they can fix the things that hurt or bother you?
Absolutely.
They adjust you correctly?
They're not, I would say, all of that.
Well, even looking at the economic standpoint, when you go to the ones in your community versus going over to Carroll, nothing against Carroll, but they're typically the ones that live in here, their kids are going to school here, there, I mean, it's, you know, shop local, that kind of.
All right. I just brought that up because I'm too small.
That was one of my things. Another thing that was brought up, a few people grabbed me about allergies in the courthouse, and you were here when you talked to Louise a little bit about dust and mold in the courthouse. I did talk to Pam two weeks ago when I was here about whether they had a, any companies, anybody they knew or had in the past come in and maybe tested the courthouse.
So I, I got wind of the mold thing, and, anyway, I got ahold of Carrie Kersey to ask her about environmental health, and she said, she said with mold, she said, you see mold, you smell mold, there is mold. So I don't know if people are seeing mold, or if they're just envisioning in our old walls that there is mold.
Louise said it's behind the radiator.
She said she could see it.
Oh, okay. So.
Well, Louise said too, like with our old windows, they used to let a lot of moisture and air, maybe, but.
Right. So, yeah, I don't know if we can get someone to come in and clean and remediate the mold.
Like a service master or?
Yeah, something. I mean, we have this, that, um, that new system that should be helping if there is, and I, you know, I don't know how far up the building it goes.
Well, once the mold starts.
Right.
Until you actively stopped it.
Exactly. So I don't know if dehumidifiers are a solution initially to capture moisture in the air, if there is. It would tell us if there is, because they would have to empty that bucket on the dehumidifier. And if they are dry, then there isn't moisture, and maybe it's moisture and mold from the past, like you were saying, our old windows that let moisture in, and maybe a good cleaning or a good, and I don't want necessarily Pam and Dave to be doing that, because I don't want them sick.
They're not qualified.
Yeah, right. We need somebody that's qualified. Yeah.
Did Carrie have any lease or?
She did it. I mean, she could, but I think.
Restoration specializes in mold remediation.
Who's that?
Paul Davis Restoration. They come in, I just remember them from, me and my time on the fire department, they'd come in after a fire and clean your house up and.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, take off. Someone local that does that. They used to be out of Sioux City, and, like, service masters.
Where they're at.
Uh, I, I, I don't know.
One, I guess.
Although, so there are people that are specialized in it, and I think it would be good to get them guys involved, because you're right, you don't need Pam and Dave getting sick, obviously.
Well, I would think that a specialized professional company would come and say, okay, here is a problem area, here's not one, and be able to really fine tune what needs to be done, and not just trying to whitewash all walls, floors, everything, but or even tell us how bad it really is or not.
Same thing from talking to Dave, that the new system that they instituted down in the basement, we weren't gonna get any results, or they weren't gonna be able to read it until after, I think, you have to reserve for a year, before they'd be able to, you know, tell you what the score is today versus. Before they'd be able to, you know, tell you what the score is today versus what the score was when we put the system in.
But by the score, when, when they put it in, was the score measuring how much mold was already in?
Was moisture.
Moisture, not mold.
Yeah, so there, there's, you know, if that mold, and if we identified black mold, I mean, it's gotta be taken care of.
Right.
And it's gotta be taken care of, right? There's different kinds of mold. You know, normally, you can smell mold, black mold.
And I do think a few people, some people are more, you know, susceptible to it versus others.
Exactly right.
But you don't want anybody having to be exposed to it.
I know, uh, you know, when I used to work downtown, my nose just itched constantly, but I felt like it was probably, you know, after they had took the remodeling and all the dust was probably in the vents and whatnot, and so we had to have those things, because I wasn't comfortable with it.
Are the interior walls, are they concrete or perhaps are those wood?
They're not. I don't think they are, but I don't know that.
Sound pretty solid. I didn't know if like those, you know, these things will hear.
That one's got like a, I think that's like a plywood or not plywood, uh, wallboard. Because you see how that sticks out up there on what I call it, it ain't a chair rail, but it's.
That is a picture rail.
Picture rail. But that's, it feels like you could stick a thumbtack.
Or I wonder even our.
And we don't have it over here. This is like concrete, that's like, you could stick a thumbtack in that, or at least nail into it. Well, so most of the building is like a solid structure.
That was a good idea to talk to Carrie. Yeah, things I, just two little things, uh, but annual meetings coming up, I saw that. And the district meeting. You talk to second.
What's that?
What's it say on there? That's the district meeting, twenty-seventh, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, five to seven.
Annual meeting is the twenty-ninth and. But this one's here.
And then, uh, personal note with Continental Carbonics, uh, adding to our economy, but I went over there and got dry ice, twenty pounds of dry ice for our trip. Or slicker than slick, you call in, you put your order in, and I talked to the people there, and they just, they say, yeah, we have a lot of people that just come in and for personal needs, grab dry ice. They have, you know, either you can get blocks or the, you know, make the digital pieces or whatever bags. And then the one guy, when I did pick it up, it was interesting, and I remember talking about this, and he said, roll your windows down. He said, what? He said, don't put it in your backseat with your windows up, it'd stay in there very long, you know, it's releasing carbon dioxide. So, I'm gonna put it in the trunk, he said, oh, you'll be fine then, but you know, just.
Oh.
Safety issue, but it's.
I wonder if Jerry gave him.
Our guy, there you go.
Seal one versus seal.
Seal one? But I, I remember when, when they first came into our area. They had talked about when we had babies at Crunk's, where they said, people in the past have gotten like a fifty-pound block of it, and they went camping, they put it in their tent. Went to sleep, thinking it'd be pretty cool to me all night long. Didn't turn out so good.
Didn't turn out very well.
So, you just said, you know, you have to be cautious, but it's just was, you know, how, how they said, yeah, we are, we serve a lot of just private folks who come in and need it for this or that or.
I never ever thought about like that, you know what? A lot of people use it to ship feed or something. That would be interesting to be in that, but that, that nail front. There was a bunch in there, the doors coming, yeah, that's.
Or even airplanes use it a lot, but you know, they're ventilated.
So, that's one of the main things that they do is the carts in the air.
That's all I got.
All right. Just keep going down the line, what do you got?
Wesco meeting last night. Just so they had their annual fundraiser, is there ducks down the Booyah River? Uh, this year, they raised eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, last year was the first year, they raised eight thousand. So, next year, they're hoping they're gonna shoot for fifteen. Uh, they sold one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven ducks. And fifty percent of that profit or around, I think, was fifty-eight, fifty-nine hundred dollars they gave to the Crawford County Nature Center. And so, uh, who, she said that was the thing, she'd never got money before from anybody. Uh, as a grant or as a fundraiser type of thing, so, and the other fifty percent they paid out to the three winners.
Are they bow to gradable ducks? Or are we gonna worry about our turtles eating?
We have to worry about the turtles eating them? But I don't think I've never had that question come up before, Ty, so. Not a hundred.
I, I've seen something where somebody was told to be a sea turtle because they were on their choking on plastic.
I mean, they pick all the ducks up, I don't think they can let any that get away down the river, because they store them and use them again the next year.
Okay.
Catch and release. Or the opposite, release and catch.
I'm sure they're economic, they're, I'm sure they're environmentally.
I'm sure they are, very conscious.
I mean, Clay don't want anything like that.
And one of the things, I'm not sure if you're, uh, just kind of talk about, they have a program now, it's called New Beginnings. And those are people that, most of them are coming through stepping stones first. And then they go to this new beginnings transition, and it's wherever they would have an open place. If they have one at stepping stones or they have an opening at a house somewhere to put some money in there to kind of transition them to, um, to try to get them on social security if they're eligible, get them on Medicaid, um, have them start paying rent, a portion of rent, have them, um, get on their own meds, so they're starting to do their own meds, and then slowly transition then to, you know, you're out on your own. And they've had three people now that have, uh, transitioned through the new beginnings program and have graduated in or out in the community. They are, we did go over the map of the, the districts and, um, they're a little bit concerned, I guess, about the stepping stones moving forward, that if that's gonna be funded. And so, they're looking at possible ways of fundraising or grant writing, um, to fund that or have it be a straight line item from the state Medicaid, um, for that program. I think that's one of only two or three in the state that has that type of program now. With that new region of twelve counties, so they'd be twelve counties that would be eligible to send people to that stepping stones. And so, certainly, it's a program that could expand. Uh, asked them last night, what does it cost to run the stepping stones program per year? And they estimated it at seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. You know, and they've got seven to eight people in there full-time with three people constantly on waiting list. So, it's an expensive program to run. So, I guess stay tuned to see how the funding gets set by July of twenty twenty-five, exactly how that's gonna work. I mean, stepping stones, um, they said that most of the people that go to stepping stones are coming from uh, transitional living, jail, they're homeless, a hospital, psych wards, uh, treatment centers, you know, that's where they come from to start there. Uh, and they are looking for, um, the bake shop, a new location for the bake shop.
Really?
So, and just because it's, the where they're at is a little bit too small. And so, they have, they said a lot of times in the mornings, they have people lined up to get in there, and then they're tired of waiting in line, so they just leave.
Yep.
And so, they're looking for a different location. Or they're even talking to the Donna Reed Theater to see if maybe there'd be a way that they could use some more of the space there. But it's, you know, coordinating the Donna Reed Foundation.
Yeah, which is.
I get it.
They anymore.
Right.
But that basement, you know, to go down those steps, I think it was about this narrowness.
And they are looking at another location uptown, um, so. And they're, we're talking with a bank on a.
No, exactly where.
Okay.
Is that a priority to stay uptown?
Yeah.
It would be, I think it would be, they're preferable, it'd be nice to be uptown, but they, they want, they want the bake shop to kind of start to transition into the, what do you wanna say, the advertising or marketing arm, or the piece of the community that Wesco wants to be moving forward. They want to be able to have a place where people can just go to and, uh, hey, if we go there, this is kind of a Wesco thing, instead of the location where all the offices are, they'd like to be more of a part of the community. And so, I think the location uptown is, would be nice to continue to stay uptown, but, um, so. We'll keep you posted there. I mean, that's not anything that's immediate that they're thinking about, but they, they know long-term that's gonna be best for, for the bake shop and what they wanna do as far as being more of a part of the community. They did, uh, they're starting some work on the house that they purchased, they hope to have, uh, their plan is September third, that people moved in. So, uh, and, uh, um, lot they have lined up for, um, Hayden Concrete is doing some of the, the work there as far as leveling it off and, and doing the flat, uh, cement sand that they're gonna build the stick home on. And they still hope to have that done this year. Or into contractor. So, that's all I got.
Very good.
Search and I had, I don't, that's been long, longer than I thought ago, a picture I had snapped off of a internet site of a stepping stones, didn't really say the name, but this gentleman, he was on some Facebook page, how he spent time in a small rural Iowa town to get back on his feet. And he was a, and it, it fit the bill, it had to be the stepping stones. The way he was describing it. And I, I took a picture of it so I could save it, because I knew someday that would come up, so I can't. Well, I told them too, that they have documentation of who all the people were that went through stepping stones. And if they have kept in contact with them, or the people have kept in contact with Wesco, where they're at today. Because I said, it'd be nice to have that information, that if we're gonna lobby at the state or lobby the state Medicaid or get, um, Mr. Holt or, you know, Mr. Schultz involved, that we have some actual, this is our real live cases. Yeah. Right, exactly. That's what you need. That's what you need.
You really.
And they do have that information, so.
Yep. And it was one that, you know, their funding was just about not there, luckily, the region could kind of help out, but that's gonna get harder and harder, so, but it's truly, it's not for a service, and so, it's not in the preview of, uh, Ms. Garcia's world.
Where do they all get their funding for stepping stones? Is it Medicaid?
It's Medicaid.
But they first sometimes have to get those people on it, because when they get there, they have not had any resources to help them.
Then Medicaid determines up the amount of care they needed, that determines how many dollars a day that they pay.
A lot of times when they come, they're, they're not signed up, and that's a big part of that administrator stopped hell down, getting the services that, uh, they have dealing. But it's a great program. We're so blessed to have you. Kyle, go ahead.
Uh, real quick, yes, center meeting Friday. I had a conservation board meeting last Wednesday night. After a lot of hard diligent work, Nelson's Park has had their private water supply stamp for approval with the DNR, so.
Fabulous.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. How long do they test them now moving forward? Well, hopefully, we won't have to worry about it again in any of our time around this board.
Excellent. That's a good job.
Was it just a lot of filing up data or?
I think it probably just followed, took the right person down to the DNR to.
Get after the job.
Yes, yes.
That's about ninety percent of it.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, they have or will suspend any deer hunting, bow hunting at Yellow Smoke this year. The numbers are just down, and that's coming from the, the DNR themselves, and so the numbers are way lower that they don't see a need to allow deer hunting within the park. Now, the city of Davidson can still say they want it on their city property, but within the park, they're not gonna allow deer hunting this year.
Okay.
So, the numbers are? Deer population are down. Countywide, or do they see that? Statewide, statewide.
How do they collect those numbers?
Same way they collect present numbers. The last really thing I know that, uh, unfortunately, the, what's his name, but the Iowa Fisheries guy, uh, anyway, he was out and they shot or did their fish count at Yellow Smoke.
Yep.
And they found, you know, what we common carp. I mean, versus grass carp, which grass carp are sterile, I didn't know that. Or more, I'm gonna assume more like Asian carp. To where, they don't know the timeline at this point, because they find that they found eight of them through their survey. And unfortunately, the only cure remedy for that is drain and kill, so.
And they, they're invasive, aren't they?
Yeah, they will take over. So, I don't know if we can get creative and have like a carp fishing tournament out there and just, I don't know.
And like they do up at the lake?
Yeah, so Chris said it could be five years from now, it could be ten years from now, but he said eventually. How do those carp, people had to put them in? Well, not necessarily, heavy rains will flush them out of a pond upstream or somebody, you know, throw them through them in there, yeah, could possibly be, but, uh, it's really hard to pinpoint how they got there. I mean, but they're there. Uh, I suppose they could have some boats, even moving around, I don't know, if we're just having some seaweed or something on a boat, and then add some eggs or something stuck into it, it's. Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. So, unfortunately, that happens. I just said, well, when we get to that point, let's not pull what they did, we were like, or they dredged it, they must uncap the sand. And they can't get a fill back.
Oh, dear. So, for right now, is it just kind of?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers right now would, and it haven't hit a threshold of concern yet, but they're there. They just found them.
Tournament probably sounds like a good way to start.
Yeah, I don't know if they spoon them, I don't wanna, I would guess if they grabbed them when they shocked them, and I don't think they. You find eight, there's probably a hundred more. But, you know, some carp are very good for the system, but these will just take over. They don't leave any habitat, every bass or your catfish or any of that, they're living. They just clean it all up. Your pond will be weed-free, and there's no habitat for the other fish to survive in. You know, with, with grass carp, you know, how, how big they get, but people always think that, you know, big grass carp must eat a lot. The fact is, as they get older, talking to fishery people, that they become like people, and just because they're big, they don't eat here much anymore. And so, I say, what you need is teenage carp. Those guys eat a lot.
I know that, that's a fact.
So, those are the notable things that came out. They are debating when to start the Nelson's Park camp, modern camp, you know, renovation. Because it's that after Labor Day, the camping really backs off to where there's no the none out there, but yet there are still campers out there, so they're debating, just close it or try to work around them, or you're gonna call the electricians, so.
Be nice if they could work around them.
I think so too, at least maybe up till first of October or something.
Because the people that are out there are gonna be glad to see that the updates are coming. So, they would have to be inconvenienced a little bit, it'd be better than not starting at all, because we have to kind of push the.
In trenches, power lines, and shouldn't, oh, the major inconvenience, I wouldn't think, especially when they're really just going to a whole new set of camp spots where it shouldn't be inconvenienced.
I'd go work around them. All right, we'll always come back to if you want to.
Yeah, I think that, that covers it.
Sure. Right. You think of something? Paul, what do you got?
Okay.
Good morning.
Updates, good morning.
Updates. Good morning. Next day, nice weather, rain?
Bad weather.
Just I've got a permit. There's a one inch water service line over on J Avenue, so. And I'll have to bring up those permits. You never have to bring them up, but you do need to sign those. The box culvert, they've got one more floor slab before to do hopefully later this week, early next week, and then they. Kind of been out, but it's just walls. We're used to these culvert contractors going a little faster. Dixon's good. It's just.
They make those box culvers there.
It's all poured in place. Yeah, yeah.
Once they get out, get the floor down there for every other day.
Yeah, they can.
For one day, set for the next, so.
So it it should go pretty good. Yep. Weather's been really good. It's it's moving along. It's just going a little slow. J Avenue there, or they're working on the, Grage just West of Kyle's there. It's going well as also. Bridge crew got them, they pulled off, just did some patching on L fifty one and E sixteen. L fifty one, I mean, it's just got a history of, you know, probably some poor concrete that was done initially when that was initially paved. Yeah, yeah, that's that's the problem is that you've got that kind of working its way through.
How would we do that? Like if we're going to pave that?
Patch the bad spots in the overlay. I mean, you just can't predict where they're going to all be. And if you get, once you get enough structure. You kind of take care of that, you know, but it's. You know. Start, you know, we widen it, put some two and a half inches on it. That'll build the the whole additional structure and patch the bad spots. Yeah, it was done in two thousand eight, so it's done a pretty good job, you know? And then the rotate guys are spraying. Let's start mowing here for the Labor Day weekend soon. Seeding. Got the seed coming today for for the fall. Lots of seeding to do. We've got our auction next Tuesday and then a safety meeting slash luncheon at Yellow Smoke, but we're going to have a guy from the D N R come in and do a. Hands on tree cutting, cut some trees out there and inviting Chris and his guys to come and join us. For the training at the lunch, so during kind of our typical grill thing there. And then I did talk to Casey Buck about the, you know, he'd ask it, like you say, grasping. At the end of the day. So I'll go right to that. He and I just talked and he said, Paul, really, all I want is if you guys can blade the road, I'll put the material on and take care of it. So that's where we landed. I said, it's no problem. But the blade operator contacted with him whenever they. So they both meet and get what they want and we move on. But I did want to explain to you. Agreements and kind of these, these little odd things that we have out there. And I've got a map. This is this Kayla Regeller years ago, or a few years ago, put this together. It has a map. And a location of all the written agreements that we have that are known. Okay, so if somebody says, well, there's an agreement there, it ain't on this map. It's not an agreement, okay? Unless they can provide a document, but we've got everything documented. Different types of agreements.
Just different.
Might be a level B, might be a seal code, might be a grade control structure. And then we've got a spreadsheet that correlates the numbers with that. And then there's a file that has all these in a nice orderly manner. So you can pull out any agreement, you can read anything you want about what we have. So just so you're aware. That if somebody says, well, there's an agreement on that, all you have to do is be down there, pull out this map. And take a look at the number. If it's not on here, you say, well, you have something in writing. That we may have missed. I mean, since I've been here, we've we've kept really good track of it and we pulled all the old ones that we could think of or we could find. So.
How do these agreements typically come about?
Well, okay, so that's what I was going to get into. So there are a number of different ones. We have seal code agreements, which. Out here by Stables, Cemetery down here, when that's completely redone, they pay fifty percent of that. Okay, we kind of ma- you know, maintain it. We'll do some seal code patching and some stuff. But if it's completely redone now, that could be a poor decision down the road too. It says, you know what? Saves us the gravel. We're okay with this. Maybe we don't, you know, you know, could we had like five different landlords down here self manning. Cemeteries, property owners paid a portion of the cost to get that seal code. Dow City Cemetery, right up on Highway thirty. They cost share in that. Stables, they cost share in that. So there's a few of those out there that we have. You know, for seal code agreements. I think those are the only three because they're the only three on here and the only three I can remember. I have grade control structures and the landlord comes in and says, hey, you know, this is, ditch is cutting back into my field. You know, could you put a riser on the inlet of this culvert to raise the grade up? And so those are marked in yellow on here. You've got a half a dozen of those where we work out an agreement. They pay for half of the cost of the, I think they pay for all the materials. We do labor and equipment and then they get cost share from N R C S to help them out. But to to the level B surfacing, there's really three ways that you get aggregated, or four, I guess. On a level B road. One is a landlord just says, hey, you know what? I I just want to put, like Casey, I just want to put gravel on it so I can get to whatever I want to get to. I don't care. I'm just going to, I'll buy it. I'll I'll spread it. That's fine, you know? That was an agreement that we had with the ordinance when they own that, you know, back in the early two thousands when we designated this level C road. There was one down by Donald up the wrong and I think he did a half to three quarters of a mile where he he put crushed limestone all the way back there. It's like, we don't care, you know? It's a level B road. He just wanted to have aggregate. He paid for it, put it on there. We bladed it periodically. The other way is after we grade a road, we'll put material on a new grade to. Keep the erosion in check and it's not enough as two seventy, if there's evidence of right now, okay? Right, south of town where people are trying to sneak through there and it rains, you know? Ninety-five percent of the time, that road's in really good shape, but when it rains a half inch or an inch and it's wet. Probably got to wait for a day to drive on it. So that's one. That's the second one. Third one is like a Kent Lansing, okay? He says, hey, I just, I I want to pay for a hundred percent of it. You got to grade it up nice. I'll I'll pay for a hundred percent of that. And then you take care of it. Now that got classified to a a level A road. And there's been, there are all these on here that are in red, okay? I think almost all of those are those types of agreements. Where we had, you know, so there's a lot of that where in back in the day, they paid a hundred percent of everything. And we had one up here when they did the winter, it was almost a hundred thousand dollars. They did all the grading, seeding, everything damages. They paid for a hundred percent of it. You know, today we've kind of migrated towards, well, we'll get the road graded, you know, you pay for the aggregate. So that's kind of where we landed there. And then the other one is we've got about five of these where. Hill and Enris, Carol Chapman's a good example, if you're familiar with his road out there. He's got his home and then he's got this grain bin that's about, you know, quarter mile on the top of the hill and it's a level B road. To his driveway. Well, he wanted to be able to get up there, so we entered into an agreement. There's like five of those, very similar to that. Where it's really steep, it's a lot of erosion and just mutually beneficial. We paid for half the gravel. They paid for half the gravel for every application. Okay, so there's a mixture of stuff out there. So, and just to let you know, if you ever have any question about the details. You know, so people say, well, you're putting gravel on a level B road. Yeah, but here are here are kind of the, the circumstances of how that works. And you know, in Casey's particular case, there's really no erosion issue. There's no, it doesn't really fit any of these. You know, so it it so I was glad that he just said, hey, you know what? I'll take care of the gravel. So you guys play it. But just to kind of make you aware of a little bit of history.
Yeah, very nice. Appreciate it very much.
So.
That could come up.
Yeah, yeah. And if you ever have any question or, you know, someone said, why can't I get it or, you know, why did somebody else get it or why is that? How did I get that? That's the history, so.
We need to know. Thank you very much.
Other than that, I think that's taken care of. I did print out the picture that you sent me. I guess just more because that was sent to Damon on July ninth, so it'd been a while. But yeah, we'll see how that works out.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Kyle, are you sure you were done?
Well, just looking at that, I know it wasn't a package or. Everybody's seen that, but it looked like September twenty fifth at five thirty P M in a live local pipeline or spot. And I don't know it, don't. See where it's open to the public or what it is, I don't know. But I mean, we got it, so I guess we were. This has got your name on it.
Oh, thank you.
So I think that's just an annual one. Yes, that paradigm doesn't special. It's just the one they annually do.
That paradigm is the one that came to, he, if it's the same guy from Canvas, or he does a.
Well, if it's in our packet, it's public.
Hey, he was a really good.
And all the pipeline people actually showed up. They're not just carbon people. I mean, there was the.
It's all the partners that are on there, you know, Black Hills, that I hear, Harbin Municipal Utilities, the Woodbine Utilities, I mean, there's. They've got all the players in there.
Stay where it is in Denison?
I was trying to read it myself.
Well, that's a good.
And groceries.
I don't think it's in Denison. Oh, yeah, Denison doesn't say where. Yep.
To be fair, it don't say where in any of the towns.
Right, right.
It's fair, fair.
To be fair.
I think you have to go in here.
And it'll tell you where. There's a scan bar QR code.
That's, I know, that's getting almost past my technology level.
But now that I'm on the I T board, I should be increasing that knowledge.
That's right.
Thank you. Everything that's going on that there are these training sessions annually at least. That all of local first responders are invited to and. Said I don't know anymore. They'll say it's not open to the public, but.
I mean, it's attending the meeting in your area provides the opportunity. If the date kind of doesn't fit your schedule, you may attend any.
Yeah, there's, so this whole month of September and October are pretty well, have more meetings there. And it does say you can go online and try your own pace, so.
I thought I was going to miss that too, yeah.
That's it, Gene.
All right, very good. Ty has a one thing he wants to add.
I'm going to a training. Well, I'm going to try to anyway. Think it's. Right here. Woodbury County Emergency Management. They are actually doing emergency preparedness where they're training their. Any civilian populace that wants to come to it for in the event of a major disaster of any type, whether it's weather related. Terrorism related or whatever, they're they're actually trying to develop community organism, community. Outreach, it's a community outreach thing. So I'm going to go to that and see if that's something that would work good for Crawford County too. And then had a couple residents that are getting involved in this, they're worried about potential, I mean. All these, you know, we hear it on the radio, on the TV news that there's. People came across our southern border that could be nefarious characters, so they worry about that. And so, I mean, it's, to me, it's something that we probably should be digging into and since our. Me E M I director is on leave, I thought I'd see if I could at least go there and check it out. So, anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you, Ty. All right, everybody have their, I was trying to get the address here real quick. Let's real quick, so. I got it.
Got it?
I got Crawford County, Iowa. How am I doing? And you?
Well, you're getting a narrow down. You're getting a narrow down. You're zeroing in on it.
I am zeroing in.
If you're any artillery, I think.
Like your agent.
Tell me it collects it or.
Close enough for her shoes and grenades.
Give it to this guy to finish for me. Let's see how that talks. Alrighty. So the next thing on our agenda is let's take action on liquor license for wine time L L C.
I'm making a motion to approve that liquor license for wine time L L C.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Not a called vote, all favor I. Any opposed, same sign. Chair votes I, so that has been approved. All right, so we have a discussion on. Twenty twenty four, I believe Chuck was going to come in for that.
He is.
You know, we also approve, if somebody wanted to sell cigars in a rural area, they'd have to come to us to approve that.
Yes.
Tobacco license.
Is Chuck ready?
First thing about putting an indoor in my wife's boutique is to. So I was kind of researching how you go about getting a license or to see if you would have to approve it. But I don't know if there'd be a big demand for it, but.
Is that boulders?
There's little things that maybe somebody would come in and.
I could tell McDermott Hayes, he's the economics professor at Iowa State, he might come over.
That boulders, okay. I figured it'd probably be at boulders, but I didn't know.
Dave, I beat you.
What else? Did you put in your county address? I could put in my personal email and I said, couldn't do that.
I did put in my county because I know it by heart now. Make it connected, right?
Could do this, the boulders. And usually have this quarter year recap.
All right.
This is where we get hands slapped.
Just, no, 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 no. I think that, I think that Chuck has. I think it's okay.
I saw it.
Be somebody like, didn't it?
This resolution certified taxes payable, that's something we could just. This sort of, we're waiting for Chuck.
Do you want to do it? Alrighty. Twenty twenty four slash twenty nine certified taxes payable for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five. How that would do not pack it. Questions on that or decision?
What does it mean?
Nobody knows.
These are the levies for the taxes payable in twenty four and twenty five.
So this is what we had. There was two different pages.
It's all the levies throughout county, all the taxing authorities, all the.
Schools, so every township.
Certified their taxes. They filed their books here. So this is just the final act to enact what we had certified. As everything say it, no. What you've certified, what do you mean? Or this is what, like? Well, I know it's everybody.
Not budgets, it's levy.
Levy itself.
Yeah, this just sets the wheel.
Yeah, for the treasurer. And what we had approved are set for us and for what the other ones, other entities, for everybody.
List the whole county. Let's try not to.
The county.
Every taxing entity in the whole county, their levies are.
And if we don't want to, let's see what county.
Township, city, school. Ag extension, hospital.
I'm making a motion to.
Thanks. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussions or resolutions? So I'll be calling individually.
Do you know, Chair, how many different taxing entities? Every township would get hit with, I mean, with the.
There are twenty townships. There are thirteen cities. There's a hospital. There's an extension. There's an assessor's office. There's the county, there's. Community colleges. There are five. Schools, C C schools. There are, yeah, there are schools, four, four, five of them. We are control county four. And then there's another four or five that we are only a small part of there. City, county, city, county, rural. Those are two separate levies. What else? Do you bring like even ours on into real basic, general basics? Well, that's the county, city, county, rural part. But I just. State TV and bangs, that's a levy. And then there's two separate cemeteries, Nishinabot and the Township Cemetery and St. Paul Cemetery.
Fifty-three.
Charlemagne. Yeah.
I got fifty-three. What do you?
I wasn't counting.
Twenty and thirteen and five.
And then these in the front, the districts, that's all of it combined. That's the total levy by district.
Fifty-three hands in the. So there's fifty-three players, that's a hundred and six hands. So there's fifty three players, that's a hundred and six hands.
Yeah.
But. That's just the wrong. All right, so we have.
One thousand sixty fingers.
All right. I call the resolution, Kyle.
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, so we have certified our taxes payable for twenty four, twenty five. Chuck is here, so we have a discussion on our fiscal year twenty four recap. Been working very hard, lots of sharpening of his pencils. Erasers.
I did my timing. It's nice to have you back at the table, God.
How we ended up. Anyway, I didn't want to waste some conversation.
Yep.
I need to do those.
Yeah, share with your friends.
Pardon? I didn't know what I.
We can share.
They're the same, right, they're all the same, but then they're big or small, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Oh, okay.
Big and small are the same. Whether you got old eyes or new eyes, newer eyes.
That old eye.
I just updated my, that's good.
I did too.
I handle a small one now.
I think, uh, the scale is a million dollars for each one of those, uh. And if you look at the, yeah, I don't have mine here, but the blue line is, uh. Or fund balances and red lines and, you know.
Thank you.
Expenditure.
Yeah.
So, well, I was looking at this morning, if the blue line. Shouldn't be that high, because the red line is expenditures, and if we, they go up, we balance it should go.
They should stay closer together.
Go down.
We need to hang them to plan, yeah.
That's true.
Let's do it.
But.
Also, I did.
We start, see, there's a, there's a million dollars in between there.
There is.
No, there's.
All this for information.
ARPA funding, throw that into SKU, because we're sitting on a million dollars worth of money sitting there.
This was just general basis.
And it's almost spent, actually, in ARPA protocols. Just over a hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand's getting close to a million, and that's a million.
I know, but we started at three point two million.
A good question.
Three years ago.
I was just seeing if that was. If I didn't ask that question, then we goes, we, we, we just started drawing out fun balances, and then we saw, oh, shit, we had eight hundred thousand that was already spoken, but now we're short, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, right, good thought.
We're not over spending the money.
And Chuck, didn't we typically a lot of times to keep them closer together, we always said, you still want to reserve a quarter to a third of your annual budget.
I don't know what's in that number.
I know, and you always debate that, but somewhere in that range where we're.
It was two million dollars for a long time. Didn't do much from last month, and it's hard to do with a lot of numbers like that. And that, that's one thing I have is, show you, I got those numbers.
With that post-COVID though, that's really kind of shot us up, hasn't it?
Well, that's, that kind of started the, you know, just looking at, that's where they crossed and haven't came back.
And I would look different, a little different scale, but there's kind of get up to.
Well, this gives a good idea.
Ten, yeah, that's what I was trying to. Drag that thing under, are they going kind of steady, or what's the deal, because Terry and I, we knew we had a lot more balance than what we thought we were gonna have, a lot more. A lot more.
That don't make me, I mean.
Well.
The project over there is gonna cost quite a few more other balances to be used, but.
You got the towers done either.
But.
It's one thing, I think, if you wanted to think about something. Be good with money in that capital projects, but. I think.
Yep, yep.
But we're always gonna have capital projects to do, because that's just endless maintenance.
Yep.
Right, there's four AC units on the roof that we're currently, oh, needing to deal with.
We're needing.
I got a quote coming from them, so. They updated the panel, the electrical panel earlier this week.
Yeah.
But the units themselves are.
We may have a load problem.
The oldest we have.
We have to look at.
Right, because starting, you know, funds are there.
Right.
We just have a transfer over, you know, I won't write a chapter, I got a chance for him, um.
That's.
But I think you need to have what they're gonna use for.
Right. And we put them in capital improvements, a little cover, a wide variety of different.
Whatever, whatever you.
I was even, you know, it's brought up to me some of the floors in our different offices, not the tile, but. Right. You know, maybe they even need to be. They do. Caught up to snuff.
We talked about it.
Right, I brought a book in here over a year ago.
I saw it, I remember it.
Nothing happened. I don't know if it's too, too much. It'd be good, that'd be a good target name for.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
This is the beautiful.
Somebody came, somebody came in and said, well, what are you doing with ten million dollar balance?
Yeah.
And you found it a little bit.
Then we get kind of a. Bachelor from state to others saying, you guys got way too much fun done. Nor was it a concern, it wasn't that part of the. The report, and it kind of really pinpointed the dirty thirty, but we were kind of drawn in there, because we're too financially stated.
But you, you don't, I mean, you don't want to overtax and not use it, but yet you don't want to use up all your funds and have no reserve either, so there's.
And you don't want to splash them real fast either.
Right.
I think part of our thing in the last, last couple of years is where we've been watching everything kind of. The state throw down mandates and stuff, and we were worried, so that's where we were a little extra cautious and protecting our fund balance. Because we really didn't know how that was gonna affect us.
I just think we still don't, because the home state sixty five is still gonna be a problem, as predicted. Uh, that we hit the wall, because we will not be getting those funds anymore, so we.
That way we don't have to have a big, all of a sudden hike or something on our taxpayers.
That's why they told us three years ago that in twenty twenty five, we will hit a wall.
But we won't know those numbers for another year, so.
Yeah.
Couple.
I paid attention to that, when you said that, I believed them.
You got another sheet that actually made it showing the numbers a little better than just this graph Chuck or not? So we're going to make an educated decision on how much we should put in a capital improvement fund.
Yeah.
Probably should have.
Okay, very big drawbacks to putting it into a capital improvement fund, do you just, that you have to spend for capital improvements, can you ever shift it out of there into someplace else? Or once it's there, it's there?
And I think, I felt once it's there, it should be used for.
I think that we would have a problem.
No, not with the towers.
And we have a lot of buildings to spend to maintain, we do.
So they're all getting one.
Does this affect, and since you're here, Sherry, it affected all the CDs that we've got, if you move it to kind of just get, just allocating it towards that, if we. Use it, but it shouldn't affect what we have in CDs or anything.
No.
No. Until you use it. Still, she can leave them in there until we use, she said.
Until we use it.
Get someone to get, pull out, you cost us some interest.
Well, yeah.
Like, just one place. Four pages.
I put a little blue mark on this one. So this, these all have blue marks.
Okay.
And yellow, and yellow, yeah.
Yeah.
On the corner. Yeah, yellow or blue, I mean, because I got that one for her too. We saw, I mean. Let's see, I have one.
You need one?
Two, three. Uh, well, it's just what Kyle is saying, well.
Isn't that, no.
Better than anything, Jen.
You can have that one, I ripped it out of your hand, that's ungrateful.
Is that what you're looking for, Kyle?
Yep, yep, and then on the back side, really kind of solidified what.
Is there extra fun?
On the butt. Funds, you guys, I probably don't see all the time, well, all the forms and everything, that's part of other funds, or kind of like, uh. Jack, too, and McCounty controls them, but they still can all be used for certain things, but I don't know, you know, any of those balances or not. And then the opioid thing in there, tower maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Which we haven't designated all those opening funds either.
Yep, even balances. I know you had that stuff over a minute.
Questions, sickles will be transferred by.
What's that?
Sickles.
We designated.
Transfer that back out in September probably.
And this is not new.
We designated, what, fifty percent?
The opioid.
Opened opioid funds. You, uh, gave the Manning Hospital over fifty thousand last year.
We have sixty four in there again.
This isn't all of it, this is the end of June.
End of June.
We just got some deposits.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that that's.
So it's more than that, probably closer to in the eighty thousand range. Tay is coming next week, I think. Emailed her last week.
That's just for your information, I guess.
Cabs, looks like they built a.
Yeah.
I know.
The B.
Read.
Read, what are they, use read for?
Was to restore. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what. How, how are we?
I mean, maybe they're building it for a reason, I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
And read.
How did we get?
No, I can't remember.
State.
From the state.
All this came from all county. And now we're going to first want to build those cabins, nobody want to step forward, find the board to give them. They had forty thousand dollars to get started, they got the first one done, now they're, you know, just, uh, put them up in income.
Mm-hmm. That's what a good program does, that.
It's worked.
Yeah.
But it was hard getting that first forty.
I remember them discussions, that was before my time, but I remember reading in the paper and stuff that.
So I don't need to spend a lot of time on it, I guess.
So how does the money get into the cabin fund? That's strictly, do we allocate it from?
Cabin fund fees.
Yeah, well, fund fees just go right back into the cabin fund.
Yep.
Can conservation pull that cabin fund for other things? No.
I think they have.
I would think they would.
Resource and.
Not until they run out of room to build cabins.
Environment.
You're gonna.
Not until they do, I think they.
You collect those fees and keep throwing a cabin, but if you don't need any more cabins.
Right.
And they should probably go in.
Somewhere.
Cost of the day to day activity of. I think they could probably.
Conservation.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Up there, on the hill, up there, hill.
I'm sure some person's keeping an eye on.
And I think, you know, we talked about a handicap accessible area, walkway between the shelter house and the cabins, and if they got funds, they could probably do that.
Yeah.
Right? Because I think that would be considered cabin fund.
I would agree.
I would agree.
It's good to know these things.
It is, good to know.
You looking up RE?
Yeah, yeah.
Re source. Read this out. It's been on the state books for all kinds of.
Resource and enhancement and protection.
Yep.
How's that being?
It's like parks and water sheds.
Cultural and cultural resources.
See that sign?
You see the little sign with the, with the little birds on it?
You do see it all.
Funded by RE.
Right.
That'd be a RE sign.
Restoration of the belt cabin would fit, can we read?
Supposed to help with like water, restore water and improvement of water quality.
Just water quality.
Well.
I'm sure, I'm sure all the information is, is board.
That's how you write the grant, I guess.
Yes. I know, yeah, pretty much.
So, so like the flood erosion?
Flood erosion, uh. Those are all local funds, we have plenty of money in there for.
So that's money that we used to take out of our budget and just put it into.
Terrorists. Dams, maybe participate in part of one or something, and also for inspection on, uh, the structures that are out there.
Okay.
Used to be J four.
Lauren, Lauren Miller. He wants to hear and talks to us on one thirty one.
Yeah, he brings a budget.
But anyway, they've got a lot of money there, it's been used by, I don't think for almost five years. So we haven't been putting any in there, it's eighty thousand dollar panel.
He always brings us a budget, unless they must never.
I don't think they spent much out there, maybe.
Well.
So it's another good thing to have, I guess. And it's been a lot after the floods. And they had that program, like, maybe like ten percent of the dam or something like that. Kind of a good program. So you move on?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
I don't know, are we doing this in the right order? It all. Okay, that's gonna be plain one. And pink.
Get you a full box of prepared ones.
But highlighters are better.
Invite Steve Holdup for dinner, then.
Yeah, very.
Who probably watched this video.
Let's start out with, uh, one that doesn't have any color on it.
Okay.
And what it do here, okay, picture this, and then picture another one just like on us, called general basics one. Picture another one just like, that's general supplemental one. So you take the general basic, general supplemental, put them together, and I just call that general fund.
Okay.
The bottom one is a combination of. Supplemental and basic, that can equal the general. So what we'll do is, uh, where it says general fund, basic and supplemental, I'll bring up that.
Mm-hmm.
As you go over to the side there, the board supervisor, there's your budget, that's where you turn in. You go down through all those departments, comes out to nine million, nine eighty eight, one forty. If you find that number.
Yep.
And that's what you put in, and you actually, when the year was all over, you spent that other column. That's nine million, one sixty five, three fifteen. That's eight hundred and twenty two thousand dollars difference.
Sure.
And all I can do is work with the numbers, that's what I'm trying to do. You know, I could say, well, every year I mess it by five hundred thousand, but I'm not gonna be one of them. Say that again.
Well, it's, well, where is it?
So anyway, the difference is. Well, it's just, just in those two columns, but a minus is a good thing, the county, I guess, because that means you spent. Twenty one thousand dollars plus, and you thought you was gonna spend. And you go down those numbers, that gets to be a big number, eight twenty two.
Sure, been a hundred and thirty two led.
Well, then you add to that, right, because our revenues are up.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking to next, revenues is next. Three columns there. And the budget, it's two million, nine seventy three, everything that came in by that department, that's all tax money and everything. And the ra- revenues, actual, three million, forty three thousand, so like Dave said, there's about seventy thousand extra on that side of income. So if you take the difference there, the next one. You know, tell the difference in, uh, bu- budget. In actual, these are, I'm, I'm trying to say, these are county funds required, to me, that's tax money. Fund balances, credits, things like that, these are funds, we're earned by the departments itself, but this is what it takes to. Profit out to the departments. That make sense to you?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So we add those, yeah, that's eight hundred ninety two thousand dollars difference.
Hence, why we're seeing the divide.
Right.
Money, yeah, fund balance versus our fund expenses. Fund balance versus our fund expenses.
And then see when you start out, you don't have a true number of the balance. That, that, that they have, so yeah, that adds to the problem. Which are preparing a budget a year and a half ahead of time.
Yeah. That's kinda.
So how did the numbers in the little box that says general fund balance coordinate with those? Numbers up above that you just went through? Uh, like that eight ninety-two, five oh one, how come that doesn't? Isn't the difference between the beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance, why doesn't it go up by that exact? Eight ninety-two, five oh one? Instead of it being, you know, change in fund balance, two million, two hundred and five thousand.
There's no. Balance in here. This is just showing a difference. Not quite answer your question there.
What you're saying is why these numbers don't match. These up here, the totals, right? I mean, I, I guess maybe I'm interpreting it wrong now, Chuck didn't explain it, but I guess when we went across the. That top big box, and we've got the first number in the expenditures, and then the difference of eight twenty-two, meaning we. Actually spent less than what we budgeted by that amount, but the next, we actually took in another seventy grand, and those two. Added together is that eight ninety-two, five oh one figure, that, that to me, I guess, was the difference then between. That would be our change in the fund balance with a change by that exact amount, because.
Should've went up by that much.
Correct, exactly. That's the way I read it, I don't know if I'm reading it right, that's my, I guess, not sure.
I think the number. If on that whole eight ninety-two would have been dropped back into the younger fund.
Right, right, exactly.
That's all I can.
It worked with, but uh, lighting amount first.
So do they, on this bottom box, is that what, after this budget year is put into the general fund balance? That was already existing? That is, that would we come up with the addition, we added a total of a million dollars to our. I'm just trying to make sense of this too, because I was questioning. This little box. Oh, that all.
And put that in there for a reason, I think.
You'll think of it.
Those are actual numbers.
Right.
They come off report.
How does uh, just as an example? You know, with Hickams, you know, because we had to do that budget amendment, you know? That number seems like that's. It, cause there, there's all, they always, for years, when we first started, you know, they asked for more, then they would always give it back. Uh, and now this year, we've tried to do it a little bit different, and we did that, remember we did a uh. Budget amendment, because they needed to spend it. After they got it, and that's, that's kind of the number that we did the amendment for, it was sixty-five thousand. Does that? Messing the numbers up a little bit because of the way they do it, cause right there is almost two hundred thousand dollars of.
Accrual.
I was.
That ain't right.
That's only supposed to be like. Five uh, five thousand dollars somewhere in there. We're gonna change that. The total's all right. In my form, and while I was telling him to take the top two and down to the one.
Down here on the bottom.
Yeah. But that's good to compare to my department, it was just off a line there or something. But it's a key counter kind of stuff.
But at the end of the day, our fund balances. Outgrowing our expenses. By pretty significant amount now. Right, just need to figure out a way to from those two push together.
Well, that's what we actually tried to do. We went through and cleaned up a lot of them line items, hopefully that'll.
Well, like there's not kicking on him, but the sheriff's, I've spent a hundred and thirty-two thousand. I mean, we cut. What did we take off his budget?
Not enough.
Not enough.
This was about the end of the. We, the budget we worked on in January is not reflected in this. I guess that's what I'm saying, is we cut his budget by, you know, hand in hand, the sky was falling.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I heard about it on the street, how we cut their budget by something like, we don't back the blue type thing. But yet, we didn't change day-to-day operations, we just were carving the fat off the day.
Correct.
Bone.
Well, we're getting rid of this.
This shows that there's, that shows out there is fat.
I mean, you look at even like public health. They're one thirty-eight.
Well, and we're, that's another one that we adjusted the way that we're actually doing that. Because over here, under the county fund required, there's a negative three hundred and eighty thousand.
Like, what's this one, we're like down here on dispatch?
Yeah, that's another.
When we put that money in there, we're thinking we were going to.
Go to the different, yeah.
Yeah, we were gonna come to agreement with the city and help fund it, but then we never did.
Yep, I remember now.
We took that money back out. That money got in the, in this current budget we're working.
The current budget?
Right.
When we started this one, our last one.
Yeah, so.
Which that's kind of gone all by the wayside too now, hasn't it? Or is there still talks?
There's, there's still a little amber burn in there, but. Amber, not amber, amber. But.
Smoky bear's keeping an eye on our fire.
Yeah. But we would have money to do that, cause we already taxed what it wants, so.
But if we wanted to, it looks like we could put. Three, four, five hundred thousand into a.
I think five hundred thousand would be a crazy number to put in there. Chuck's saying it's a little higher, and I, I don't disagree with that to the extent that. Kind of curious on what we did in January, how that's gonna affect things. In next June thirtieth.
Right.
You mean, it's how the state stuffs affect finish, means that we're putting them up?
Yeah, what we did at budget time in January of this year, how that's gonna affect. This fund balance at the end of June thirtieth and twenty-five.
I think we did try to clean up them.
We did.
Line items quite a bit.
We did.
People barking.
But yeah, we, we still have, you know, that would still be us, really probably excess fund balances, but. I mean, we could probably do three quarters of a million and put it in a capital improvement projects, and it's always there for capital improvements.
Chuck, looking forward though, you know, with this changes, this House Paul seven eighteen, and we really haven't seen the true. Numbers of how the credits or exemptions are gonna affect us, um, you know, economy slowing down. Commodity prices are lower, land prices are starting pouring all that into our. Our, how it is figured, a lot of times we lived, let's say a three percent. Pay increase for our employees was our new growth. In our revenue. You know, what happens if we're at a negative the next? Two, three, four, five years? All of a sudden, that fund balance is gonna come down real fast, because unless we freeze wages for five years. Which I mean, you know. Hardly, you can't do that either, it's okay, stay with, I'm not saying I want to do that, I'm just saying, you know.
It's an example.
You're, you're, uh, you're having to leave some cushion in.
Just because, let's say, yeah, we do, I mean, there was years past when that five-year rolling average for our assessments, so that. Brought our revenue below what our expenses were, you know, and if we come to that point again, I mean, just looking at our commodity prices, they weren't being there at. That, that gap or this larger discipline, you know, let's say we eat it up in salary increases. I'm not saying that it has to all be safe for that, we could still put five hundred thousand into a capital improvement project to keep maintaining our courthouse, but. You know, if our, this year, we didn't see that loss of revenue because we had enough growth, even with the setbacks of our levies. Great enough to offset our salary increases. Might not be the case. Next couple of years.
Well, the courthouse deficit was the smallest of all.
If you take the approach, I guess, that you wanna say, you mentioned either a quarter or a third. In your balance as a reserve, and debate about whether it should be an order or a third, but because of inflation. Raising your overall. Amount that you spend, your budget every year, as your budget goes up, and if you stick with the same percent, your ba- your fund balance will automatically go up. Every year, right, just to stay within that exact same either. A third or a fourth percent.
Right.
So it, it, our general fund balance going up, if our budget goes up, the general fund balance should go up there, right?
So which means those two lines should be. Parallel, parallel together.
In a perfect world.
In a perfect world.
By COVID. During COVID, that number crossed the boundary, and now they came back close since they. I don't know, ARBA funds propagated that.
Eating up general. If you look at.
In June thirtieth or twenty-two, we were close. The last two years.
Look at. Look at the characters revenues.
Insurance, I don't, where, where's insurance?
And I think that's.
You know.
Or is it in each department?
You can explain public count.
Each department.
Difference in their revenue, because they're short hospice, nursing, they're.
So like where we had to cover some extras, or doing that.
You know, hospice, you don't know how much hospice revenue, how public health's gonna get.
But there's.
Me have an idea, but. It's not a given.
The indication, what we would have done in the twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget year, I mean, the lines were kind of trending. And then all of a sudden, all the general fund expenses decreased.
For sure.
Or splat. Or.
I tried to track it down, but.
They didn't really flatline, but they didn't increase with our.
Right, I mean, that, that's where the trajectory changed.
Twenty, twenty.
By changing that trajectory that little bit, it would uh.
Yeah.
Still about that has something to do with ARBA funds, that's all part of that whole.
They do one of these for twenty-three. If it's twenty-four, they do one of these thing sheets for twenty.
Part of that, you know, we were levying for.
I'm still trying to decipher if we, just the anomaly that we're there, and this will catch up with us in a year. That red line might shoot way up and.
But like the, the ARBA funds and the towers. Still levy the same amount, right Chuck, but yet we didn't spend it because we use ARBA funds first. Is that right? You know, so let's say we levy four hundred thousand example, and then.
I like, I, I just wanna make sure we traveled by five hundred thousand, and next year, we're not, it'll be.
Wait till it gets a little closer.
Yeah, that's all. I think we could easily do probably five hundred thousand, I just, I don't wanna maybe go over that amount to where. Where to buy.
Right. Right.
These numbers bring a lot too, but this, this, this graph kind of got me looking at what. What changed, everything, you know, always set steady to upward growth, and then they're just.
Well, that's what Terry and I caught it too, we, we talked these. And as far as. Twenty-three and twenty-two now, as you can tell on here. Changed.
What I like that issue, I really do, putting in capital improvements, because I think we've done a good job over the years of trying to stay ahead of. Keeping our courthouse in pristine shape, some of them that had, we built new courthouse for forty million. You know, some counties have really spent our, you know, five hundred thousand.
Tell me what you think of. Mark would be to. With general basic fund, where you want that to end up? Balanced by.
Balanced lies?
I just, I guess I always kept in mind the six months operating. These, cause I, I mean, we were close to that point. At the outbreak of COVID, when they said, well, nobody has to pay their dashes. So I mean, there's no money coming in, I think people were still paying, but they had the option to not pay them. And we could have been in the buying, cause we wouldn't have enough money to operate.
That goes back to that. Are we, should it be twenty-five, should it be thirty-three percent, should it be half a year's budget? That's a difference, you know?
Half a year's budget, we always made sense.
I just use half a year, cause taxes are twice a year, so I mean, you usually got half a year to work with. Before you got more money coming in, so. But I think the state might have beaten that too much.
I think they did, what they told.
But I would rather go to, go down there, get called with a car pick, cause we had too much money in our.
That's why I think the capital improvement funds, the more you put it, better.
The history of that was, I think, every department used to come in, I conservation started when they wanted their new office, they came in with a big number in their budget. And then it seems to never come out of it. So that's when we started, you know, put your big projects and we'll fund a lot of capital improvements, cause that's where we're actually going, it's a. Building capital for the county. It's not a department. So I think that's a good place to do it.
Kyle, if you're looking at like total expenditures of nine point nine eight eight, almost ten mil. Half of that's five. But yet we're still pushing eight. Over half a year. Now.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you draw some of that back down, but put five hundred into your capital improvements. Still got a little bit.
We can move half. Can't do it this week, but we can move half in there, and then you can bring them next reports, and we can try to figure out where this. Trajectory changed or why. It might continue to be. Falling the same now, but just, or might be trying to come piece together by. What we did in January, trying to cut them fats out of budgets, where it starts coming back together.
It's gonna be hard to predict any, time to tell. First year probably.
Correct, but I. We could at least figure out maybe why this changed, the upward. Continuation of whether it's got to do with ARBA funds somewhere or.
Well, especially since it started in twenty.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Which I, I think part of like the house time example, we were, we were in tax court, but then we turned around and used ARBA funds to pay for a lot of them.
We knew we were gonna spend it, Chuck. We just didn't know when, know if we'd get tax support.
Yes, that's not, it shows our.
Maybe this is more tower related.
Since general basic.
And EMA is gonna need a budget amendment before the end of this fiscal year, or this calendar year. To get through, especially the Raycom expenses, cause it's over. Um, I don't know where we're at in spending, but at one point. Early, well, not that far into this fiscal year anyway. Uh, one point, one million, and it's gonna exceed what. They currently have in their fund balance.
Spending authority, it's actually be a additional.
It'll be above that five hundred thousand that's budgeted for transfer.
That's typically normal expense either.
On, no, that's to hopefully gain completion of those towers.
And that's done.
And I don't know what else there is. Yeah, I don't know what else there is to get completed, you know, where are they approaching completion date?
I was under the impression it was supposed to be this month.
We got a reminder on that, do you think, Ty?
So I uh.
Good question.
Last week, when I talked to Dewayne with the night one and stuff, I asked him what he knew of this. Apparently, there's some grounding issues yet, that.
Yeah.
We're talking about anger equipment until them are fixed, so we're back to tower.
Yes, that outfit over there in Cedar Rapids again, but they were coming back to do it.
Okay, so once that's done though, I think, I'm pretty much ready to go.
Yeah.
So.
It was the grinding.
Be the end of September or whatever, before October, like.
So will that cost more money when they come back, or is that all part of their original deal?
It should be part of the original deal.
Some of it's part of the original.
See, there's the problem, if we think.
They, they draw me stuff according to the plan, so they missed something, so it should be under there.
Tim, Tim had a pretty good, pretty good handle on this. Can't remember what he told me, I was driving down the road, so I couldn't take any notes.
Oh, sure.
Oh, forsakeable, go ahead.
Okay, Terry, do you remember back when we went to be self-insured? And that self-insurance pool, we liked to see it around that one and a half million. When it first started, we had to pull money out of like our general fund to start that pool, and then once that.
That was before me even.
You remember, Kyle, do you remember, Chuck?
I don't remember when all that started either, cause I came in right as we were switching back to Blue Cross, we were shield.
And I guess why I'm asking, because.
I, I were down.
You mean when, when we got down to the three hundred thousand, or you mean at the very, very beginning?
Either way, I mean, I, I know we had.
I don't think we ever borrowed anything to gain, to grow that.
I, I didn't know if you had to start at like a million dollars, and then it got down, because we didn't, you know, you had to make adjustments.
I don't know.
If we'd ever get into that time, and I asked, is I. If it gets so low, how do you get without, back out of it, to cushion the blow without having to over. Charge employees or take back out, I'm just thinking from that aspect.
I don't think we went with our self-funded insurance.
I think you just operated out of the general basic for a while.
So they took money out of the general basic to start that pool?
I think they paid the insurance out of there, directly on general basic.
So.
Then.
You know, we talked about insurance earlier today, and how lawful it is, and not that you wanna have a savings account for it, but yeah. Just don't wanna be caught.
Right, but we kind of do in.
Lined cited.
Not our cell phone. But.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because we're down to one point one, you know?
I I don't even know where we're at.
Been a little bit since we did a report on that.
We should get an update on that.
Park that person. Playing in Brazil, it's slow, it's hard to control.
And I and then I said, I'm just thinking out loud, but if we have this extra now, are we gonna need it eventually down the road for something like that if and if we. If we get it back down and we don't have that. Just playing out different scenarios.
There's much of only to play out.
Well.
Good update, though, good numbers, look at that kind of a.
Panch sheet?
Yep.
Really. A head scratcher.
Panch sheet. Either the same or the.
Oh.
Oh, it's the rural stuff, right?
This is rural, which we got a pretty good handle on that. We could. Just have to not spend more and take in there, I guess.
I'm making sure that was the roadside.
Yeah.
Which is. The difference of seeding a bunch and paying for a bunch of seed going here and there. Something like this.
Even that, that's a day, there's eighty-nine thousand dollars difference there.
Why did we have forty-nine thousand in revenue from roadside?
Tractor or something?
Same. Same equipment, okay, okay.
That's why it's not a lot, yeah. Well, that's the way that one works.
Okay.
Go ahead, square.
Easy, easy, I think.
Got another one to hand out?
Go to the.
Let's do the orange.
Orange?
Orange. Hey, we'll hand it out.
Do you have a key for, you have to go down back there.
One side, I look.
I'm on the side, I'm I'm done this one for you before, but. Lot of numbers, yeah, what I tried to do is make it a little simpler. Most of them, you would have, they'd all be running together and you have secondary road in there, well, that skews it so much, secondary road. So I just took them out, included in there. And capital projects did not include in here either. So I. Started on expenditure side, go clear down. Uh, to actual before, that should be on the general basic. Six million. That's basic, no, that's expenditure. Six million, five thirty-one, six seventy-three. When we filled the budget out for twenty-four, which we moved back in my first part of twenty-three. We thought we'd go, we estimated we were gonna have seven million, twenty-one thousand, three hundred fifty dollars at the end of June thirty. Instead, we had a. Early on stamp, I should say, six million, five thirty-one, six seventy-three, still have four and ninety thousand dollar difference. Then something on the same thing. These expenditures, remember? And uh. Then I got that little divided line, that blank space in between the two, all the columns there. Remember, one on the left-hand side of all general fund. On the right-hand side of all rural fund. And then the other over here has all the Kyle that talking about the art funds in it. Want to keep them separate, so they're separate then. We'll check in and see.
Just Arpa is other?
It, no.
It's all those ones, right?
All of them, yeah.
All of those.
Shouldn't that hit per sheet again?
This is our other, this is our.
They're down to their bottom again.
Okay.
One million, six ninety-eight, six thirty-eight.
Okay.
Jerry's gonna keep tab it all. So that's the expenditure part, I don't know, on the, what kind of that green side? Green side, it's a thing type of thing, only this is the estimates on balances. Being everything on the left side of that gap is general funds. The right-hand side is rural funds. Month four and a half, so I don't know. I'll look at that question you had, Craig.
What's that?
I'll look for that question, yeah.
Chuck, am I wrong in thinking on on each side, whether the expenditures, the three numbers that pop out to me are, when you look at. Like you take care, I'm on the expenditure side on your general fund. We actually didn't spend five hundred fifty-four thousand. On your expenditure fund for rural. We didn't spend twenty thousand, those are all gains to our fund balance. Flip it over to the other side. Your revenues, you want point five in your general fund balance, it's an increase. Fund balance in rural basically of a hundred and nine, it's an increase of revenue. Right, so we're spending less and then taking in more.
Well, I don't know, spending less.
From what we.
Yeah, it doesn't make.
We're rolling taps and there you go.
We're not necessarily spending less than what we're taxing.
We're taxing too much. Right, our expenses, right.
I have where first time I grabbed, like I said, it should be.
Upswing.
Do you get it?
Well, it'll be interesting to see what it does from this year, from last year to this year. You know what? If the lines come closer together, because we really went in there and cut. Some of the bluff.
Yeah, right, well, we took a lot of line items that weren't being spent.
That were just set there.
You know, that for a couple of years and took those back out.
Yeah.
It it.
I thought I figured even all that items, that was even, I can't remember.
Well, we took baby steps, we didn't want to.
But we didn't want to hack anybody to where they couldn't pay their bills, but we also wanted to start. Getting this, I mean, I think we knew that this, this this really doesn't shock. The graph. That's why we went in and did that this year, because. I think we thought that we had room to clean up.
First gonna look differently.
Into income versus the outgoing.
Definitely. What?
We don't need a profit in local government right now, or generate on, so to speak. Part of that, I mean, how much of that's due to the, you know, like. Where their revenues, a couple of cattle, person, another one, does that, does that make a bigger difference?
Yeah, so Chuck, is this kind of your own formula, or are you like the only person that generates countywide? Something like this for their order supervisors? It's not a program that everybody uses, you just stick it in there.
Well, you know, it's from Tyler. Their software, but he's saying, yeah, you heard Tyler, right?
Okay.
And uh, I mean, they all, they all just all there, but if you don't put them together a little bit, follow them, to me anyhow, I can't keep track of them.
Thing is really there.
It's uh.
We haven't had this yet, thank you.
Chuck, I have a question for you. Cherry's put in and adds pretty really good CD rates. Is that revenue reflected in this at all?
Should be.
Should be.
Yeah, their treasury. Would that all be in the treasury or?
Be on their general.
General.
General basic. General basic. Salt throughout the.
You know, wherever it was taken out of.
That was one of the other ways to help reduce tax asking too.
Right.
Even for each or change it too.
Because like the basic fund from twenty-two to twenty-three went from six point four million to seven point two, so some of that, that should be, that's reflective in that then.
But you gotta spend and watch it every year. You can keep getting CDs, obviously, but the. The rates are gonna start to drop. The Fed's out here, they're still talking about more. More decreases.
A lot of that, I guess I'm not really sure how it works, but a lot of that, is that showing his revenue yet by roll the entire CD? You know, my, if I started with a million dollar CD and it'd be twenty-five thousand dollars interest in that roll, that whole thing. Would that twenty-five thousand show his revenue now or not until we cash it, I guess about a hundred percent share of that?
That's your good question.
I don't know.
I think it's twice what it is.
Cash basis.
If she's just rolling it. Endow me a million twenty-five percent share, so I.
Don't capture that increase until you actually cash it back on the books, right?
Yeah.
Sure, so I'm right beside it.
Yeah. Yeah, so now it is a cap, cap for now. That would be, that would be our assumption at this point, it doesn't even capture it. That you can't out.
So typically, I've been rolling the entire amount. But the last couple of months, I've just been, the last two months, I've only rolled the million because our expenses have been so high. And without September's taxes, you know, we haven't started pulling those in yet. About like pre gotten ourselves short, so I have the interest back for us.
Okay.
I am mostly doing one year or?
Mostly one year, yes, I think I have a million dollar CD to every month, I think I'll get twelve from that.
That's gonna make a difference.
Yep. Yeah.
I'm sure you're a lot more than that five, four and a half.
A lot of them are I think five, but now if I was to do like today, I think it'd probably be about four point two. The one I did on Friday was five. Point one seven.
You just got out on Friday?
Very soon. And then Friday to change.
Okay, Wes going in last night and I found a shirt for seven, they just jet it's five point one. Croppers.
Well, they get them.
Five point one for. I don't think I've ever gotten five.
Okay, well, they said they were working with Larry Anderson.
Cheers.
Okay.
Use that as leverage. What they heard.
That made a difference between public funds and.
I think that was just a six month. CD.
So some of the six months were a little bit more, but I'm trying to keep them at twelve months.
Yes, we need it.
Did to keep on that rolling.
Good plan.
I would be then.
All right, do we have any more questions of Chuck and his excellent reports and numbers, we can all take these home and.
Yeah.
Go through them and get our own highlighters out.
Yeah, I know that being followed on. All right, yeah. I didn't feel like they're close.
On what color sheet, which one, the green one?
On different departments.
The one with the departments.
This first one you passed out.
Uh, yeah, the one with no, it's one with no mark.
There, we didn't all shoot.
Oh, yeah, you're talking, oh, they're billion, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the states that.
You can look at the plain, plain one with no marks, if you go down to number eleven. Or said accrual. That's not what they pay you.
That's what?
That's not what they pay you?
No, that number should be like, I don't know, you're like five fifty-five hundred dollars tonight. And so what happened was when I brought those two formulas down, there's an error in that formula, but the totals are right. The only thing that much change at all would be that accrual one that would change and. You would think that would add, make a difference, but it doesn't, I mean, the totals are right. But that accrual will be like fifty-five hundred. I'll change all that. The totals are right, I just caught that line, you know? That's that's where I get.
Wondering where it all went?
Oh, yeah.
Where'd it go?
Sixteen hundred dollars last year, I think.
What's little? Little number. But yes, thank you, Chuck, very much, that's good information, it's a lot to think about.
Yeah.
And.
There's a lot.
There is a lot to think about, so. Good information, thank you very much, anybody have any more questions?
So like next week, then do we need to? If we choose.
On the agenda to discuss it again, see if you want to put it in.
I think it's best to take action on the transfer.
I might wait till budget time.
Wait till budget.
Wait a while.
I mean, I'll kick this through, get this last two of these towers paid for.
We should have a better actor by December time, we'll have a better reading on one of our expenses, we're on some of these big projects, the. Public health building. Community services building, county service building, yeah. County.
Can't wait to see.
Gopher County Community Service Building.
You're right. I kind of like that too, or just, that makes sense.
The CCSB.
Let's just wait and see if this tower gang plays out.
Yeah.
Can we get an update on towers, do you think, kind of where we're at or?
It's just dead.
You know, kind of.
We just give away some guys who come back and house things and then they will.
It's pretty close to what the update is, I mean, we're waiting to see. Uh. Cell sites got to come back and do that grounding, and I don't think they were really, they had some projects they were doing.
You say they have to do their grounding, is that electrical work or?
It's ground stuck to the ground.
Like the fence needs to be.
Some of the fences, there's a couple of fences that weren't grounded properly, there was some internal stuff to be ground. Everything's got to have a damn ground on it out there. For obvious reasons, it's next up in the airway, but.
Well, it's somebody's energy.
But uh, that's probably been an asset of having Tim around. You know, what he's looked at.
Good job. All right.
Thank you, Chuck.
We are in this uh, citizens input, I assume Jerry or Dick have something for citizen input?
I just wanted to listen to the depth of.
Okay, fine, sure.
All right.
Dick, thank you.
Uh, no, I got just something simple, um. Me, I've been taking a more active role in ICIT, my affiliate, and. I I elected to get into the legislative side of things, but I don't know how the board wants to handle me. Going away or handling these events, uh, if that's something that has to be taken out of my vacation time, or if that's something that. As far as travel expenses, things along those lines.
You elected to do that, the your board, what what's your board's feeling on that?
So. Um, I was part of the. I was part of the board for two years, I was a rep, the the district rep here, and it didn't. That specific function didn't really require me to go about doing a whole lot, okay, I think there was, we had one luncheon. That was in Storm Lake, that was. It was whatever, you know, it was all taken out of that affiliates. Money as far as the uh, the luncheon itself, but the the mileage was taken out of my budget. Um, which was, you know, it was just a trip to Storm Lake and back over noon, so. Um, but the upcoming one, legislative one, is a little bit more of a heavy duty one from all the affiliates. And I just kind of wanted a little direction as far as, um, is that something I should probably resign from regarding, as far as taking up time and resources towards that specific function or?
What's the benefit?
How much benefit? Well, the legislative committee represented goes to ISAC and sponsors bills that that go up to the. State representatives that they vote on, so we're just sponsoring bills in a sense on behalf of the affiliate, and so.
How many is on that committee?
For for ICIT, there's two, um, I, um, I'm sorry.
Who?
Who, myself right now, and then there's an individual down in Des Moines, um. Jake Covington is the individual, I think he is the GIS administrator, typically ICIT is split between two. Uh, functions, there's GIS and then there's IT. So usually like have a representative from both on each um, committee.
How much time do you think it would require, because I'm not against. Use Paul as an example, I mean, he's been on different boards and stuff and brought a lot back to our county. Prior to anybody really knowing about it, is.
The whole state, but it also.
Well, it's sometime doing a job here.
Well, doing his job here. So now did he use vacation time and such on his when he did some of that stuff, I don't, I can't recall or not, if there's. There's some value to what you're saying, that would be definitely beneficial to the county.
So.
I mean, you're gonna spend. So many hours a year. Pushing, I mean, legislative stuff, I mean, you're not gonna be sitting in Des Moines lobbying every day.
No, no, of course not, like.
If you are, we're gonna probably have to. Um, really readjust.
Absolutely, I I, yeah, if that was something, if it was some of that situation, yeah. Could be done.
The key is time management.
Yeah.
They still do, what needs to be done here. While helping out there and making it better for all of us at the county.
Yeah.
Right.
And I I was doing that as a district rep for ICIT and it was. I I, most of them were virtual meetings downstairs, so I didn't have to go anywhere.
Say the IT guys, you guys can probably virtual load a lot of your stuff, unless you're going to actually deal with the legislators.
Right, and then, but in this specific instance, as a legislative representative. I'm I'm working with the treasurer and the auditor affiliates also on this upcoming event next week. Um, it's two hours uh, from about two to four. So it's in Des Moines. So, um. So it's in Des Moines, so, um.
What event? Oh, ISA?
Yeah, summer meeting or whatever.
It might be part of that, I don't know. They'll, I'm not staying down there. It's only gonna be, I'll probably be just down there for two to four.
Isak summer meeting, annual meeting.
Annual meetings.
It's next week.
So I usually don't go to that, so.
Yeah, so it's in, it's in, mixed into that.
Well, I think the big thing too is, just like you're doing today, is communicating with us and your IT board of what, what you're doing. What benefits you're seeing, the things you're working on and how you're managing it with your time here versus your time there.
Right.
You know, and if we feel like it's getting unbalanced, then we'll have to readjust.
At one point in time, I mean, that's. Paul was helping out with other counties and I, this board said, you know what, we pay you to be here and. You know, it's, they had to readjust, I mean.
Right.
Uh, so I think we'll just play it to the, if you waste too much time, we will call you up and say it's over.
These offices start giving us. Chewing on us, it's kind of.
You do a good job of letting us know when you're on vacation or when you're gonna be out and kind of what's going on and I, I appreciate that, so. Um, keep that up. I think that will help, that we kind of have an idea of Jake's not around.
Um, one thing I will mention that I, I, I do have a little bit of a self interest or personal, not personal interest, but self interest. In the legislative committee at this point, cause I'm trying to get a, a bill pushed on behalf of all the counties. Um, regarding broadband. I think I brought it to you guys' visibility periodically, um, just for underserved counties in general. And the fact that courthouses can't use the Iowa Communications Network. Um, and that's, I'm, we're, I'm trying to get ISAC to get behind on that one and that would be, this would be a help if that.
Sounds like it serves our both.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, cause right now.
What we want you to do.
Yeah, um, cause right now, like I said, no, no courthouse can use the ICN for. These type of purposes, for just general business. Um, they've got a year used wireless license and these boards, it's gotta be with this batch or E nine one one. Or something along those lines, so, um. So I'm trying to get, that would be a nice, have another ISP in the area.
Those are things that serve to both.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll get any complaints from this board.
So, okay, but yeah, that was just my last little cap.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Very much.
Alright.
Alright, citizens input, uh, on Zoom. Anybody, uh, Cindy, uh, yes?
Hi, I have a cold, so I apologize if I sound rough or start coughing and have to leave. Um, just a couple of things. First, um. I think that the employees, you guys are talking about taxes and, and budgets and everything. I think the employees are very, very fortunate to have the benefit package that they have. And like Kyle was saying, insurance is going up everywhere. I mean, property, health, you name it, it's going up. I think that you should maybe start warning the employees that their, um. That their premiums may be going up next year as well. I know you're able to avoid it this year. But I just, you know, the, the real world, everybody's taxes are going up. So I don't, just kind of a thought, just a food for thought there, um. Excuse me. Also. I'm, I've been sitting here watching Sherry and, and Jake sit in the back of the room. Sherry understands she wanted to be part of the conversation with Chuck, but it really is kind of ironic. When Dave just talked about time management and we have Jake sitting there during your meeting. And I'm not saying that the employees do not have good input, but perhaps we could look into some kind of a program that. If they wanna talk during citizens input, they text somebody or someone can let them know when it's coming up. Rather than have them waste their valuable time sitting and waiting for citizens input to come around. I just think it's kind of a, especially now that the Zooms are, are public knowledge, people see this. To me, it's like, wow, we don't have enough work to do that. We can sit there for an hour and wait. Where I could have just, you know, let Gene know that I wanna be talking at citizens input. And with the technology now, we text you and you're all in the courthouse. What would be three minutes to get to the room? So just, you know, it's, it's not a really good appearance. And I know that he's busy, but then especially when he just comes to you and then wants to do other things. I was really glad that. That Dave said about time management and that's kind of what it comes down to. But anyway, that's just my input for the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for attending. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I mean, certainly the employees, like Cindy said, they could be zooming in the meeting and once they see that we get. To public input, they could come up and then address also again in time.
Yes.
But I like the idea about texting them where if they let you know ahead of time and said, hey, get to that point, let me know. That the, that fine. Good idea.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on Zoom? Otherwise, we will have a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Okay. Okay, alright, you deposed adjourned. Otherwise, we'll call a motion on David. David, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Appreciate the input. Alright. Take these numbers off. I might dump my coffee out this time. I was amazed how much green.
Cause Tyler.